Good evening. I'd like to call the Licensing Board meeting to order for February 19th, 2018. We have ten items on the agenda. Just allow, I'll stand for Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay, item number one, approve the minutes from the February 5th, 2018 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side? Motion carries. Number two, agent appointment for the ShopCo stores.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side? Motion carried. Item number three, approve the list of operator licenses.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side? Motion carries. Number four, reserve Class B accommodation license for Buzzdome Borough Maple Road LLC, Buzzdome's Pub and Grill, 1800 Barton Avenue. And we have a presentation by Chief Moeller. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. I indicated in memo to License and Council, we did a fairly extensive background into this application, mostly based upon a present location that Mr. Buzzdome owns in Germantown and a past business that he owned just outside the city of West Bend. We had a number of reports that we went through. In the majority of those reports, there was no action taken or no convictions. So while I am very concerned about Mr. Buzzdome and him taking a license in the city, I feel that there's nothing that would get me to recommend that we deny. I did meet with Mr. Buzzdome, explained my concerns. He was cooperative in that meeting. He claimed that some of the incidents, particularly the ones in Germantown, that he was not aware of. I was not able to verify from Germantown Police whether or not the owner was notified. That is our protocol. So I don't know if he was aware of those. He is aware that if he gets this license, that we will notify him of any and all violations or potential violations. I guess I take him for his word that he understands our standards and the concerns that we have. I also became aware this last weekend that he was doing some renovations to the building. Building inspection went out there today, and he was given some notices to get proper licensing, and they'll be going back to do further inspections. So in addition to getting a license, he will have to comply with all the building inspection regulations before he would get any occupancy.
Thank you, Chief. Is Mr. Buzzdome in the audience? Anything you'd like to say, sir?
Not at this time, sir. Thank you.
Do we have a motion on the item? Based on the Chief's recommendation that there is really no reason at this time to not grant Mr. Buzzdome the license, as the Chief said, Mr. Buzzdome, there are numerous concerns with the lengthy reports that we have here. He said that you were cooperative with them and agreed to follow the policies that the city has, and I'm sure you know that if you don't follow the policies, that there are ramifications that can happen with the license. So based on that, I'll make a recommendation to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same side? Mr. Buzzdome, just to let you know this, we'll come back to common counsel. This is just a recommendation to the entire council from the Licensing Board, and they'll have the final say on whether or not the license is granted.
Thank you very much. Which date would that be?
Tonight.
Oh, tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I need to stick around, or?
It's up to you. Item number five, temporary Class B license for the Downtown West Bend Association for Music on Main, being held in downtown West Bend, Old Settlers Park, within the designated areas from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And these dates are all in 2018, June 7th, June 14th, June 21st, June 28th, July 5th, July 12th, July 19th, July 26th, August 9th, August 16th, August 23rd, and August 30th.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same side? Motion carries. Item number six, temporary Class B license for the Downtown West Bend Association for Tour of Americans Dairyland, the Toad Races, being held downtown West Bend concourse within the designated area from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, June 25th, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same side? Motion carries. Item seven, temporary Class B license for the Downtown West Bend Association for Music on Maxwell Street to be held within the designated areas from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM on August 2nd, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same side? Motion carries. Item number eight, temporary Class B beer/wine licenses for the Downtown West Bend Association for the Wheels on Main Car Show to be held downtown in the designated area on September 2nd, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same side? Motion carries. Item number nine, temporary Class B beer/wine license for the Downtown West Bend Association for Music on Main, being held September 6th, 2018, within the designated area, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same side? Motion carries. And item number 10, temporary Class B beer license for St. Luke Lutheran Church for Crossroads Music Fest, being held in Regner Park in the entertainment area on September 23rd, 2018, 10:30 AM to 8:00 PM.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same side? Motion carries. And with that, I'll close the Licensing Board. I will call the Common Counsel to order for February 19th, 2018. We have a total of 27 items on the agenda, and we will be skipping to item 15, Police Department Citizen Appreciation Board Presentation.
Good evening. We have quite a few citizens the Police Department would like to recognize tonight. Start with Heather Moore. Heather, are you in the audience? All right. Heather, on February 11th of 2017, was at the Walmart parking lot when she observed a male subject run from the store into a waiting vehicle. She believed that the subject was concealing items underneath his jacket and correctly assumed that he was recently involved in a theft from the store. She contacted the police, followed the vehicle, and provided detailed information allowing for officers to locate, stop, and arrest the suspect. Heather is commended for her willingness to get involved. Kelsey Oliver. Kelsey? Yep, if you could please step up to the Chief. On March 17th, 2017, Kelsey Oliver, then a senior at West Bend High Schools, observed a suspicious male subject going through cars in the east parking lot. When Ms. Oliver heard that one of the vehicle's alarms activated, she again correctly assumed the male was up to no good. Ms. Oliver notified one of the school liaison officers, who immediately began investigating the incident. A short time later, Ms. Oliver observed the suspect again, this time in the west lot, and was able to provide, again, his location and a more thorough description of his clothing. Based on Ms. Oliver's keen observations and her willingness to get involved, the suspect was located, arrested, and charged with theft. Victims were notified of these thefts before they knew that they had occurred, and all their property was returned. Marissa Zarda. Marissa, are you in the audience? Welcome. Please. On April 4th of 2017, two adult women entered the City of West Bend Community Library and began damaging property within the library, placing super glue on several items, causing a total of $2,000 in damage. When Ms. Zarda, an employee of the library, reviewed the surveillance video, she thought she recognized the suspects and took it upon herself to research online and was able to develop information allowing for officers to identify and take both subjects into custody and charged with theft and criminal damage. I'm sorry, criminal damage. Also, more importantly, four additional businesses had been damaged in the same way, and thanks to Marissa's work, all of those businesses were made whole and the suspects were held accountable. So nice work.[716.70][716.70](applause) Kim Maglio. Kim Maglio? Probably slaughtering that name. M-A-G-L-I-O. All right. On April 6th, Kim observed a female subject in the parking lot of the PNC Bank in the city of West Bend, believed she was involved in using drugs. Kim called the Police Department, provided a detailed vehicle description, and continued monitoring until officers could arrive. Based on Kim's description, the officers quickly located and confirmed the suspect was indeed utilizing drugs in the parking lot. Suspect was arrested for operating while intoxicated and some drug possession charges. Thanks to Kim's observations, kept another impaired driver off the roads, kept them safe, and prevented any harm for our citizens. Nice work. Janelle Stoltz. Janelle Stoltz? All right. On May 4th, 2017, Ms. Stoltz again correctly identified what appeared to be a retail theft in progress at Walmart. Officers were unable to locate the vehicle as it fled the scene. However, Ms. Stoltz, observing subject running and fleeing the area, followed onto US Highway 45, contacted the Police Department, and provided detailed location and descriptions, allowing the officers to stop the vehicle and arrest the suspect. Suspect had been involved in multiple retail thefts throughout the Milwaukee area. His arrest cleared several of those cases. So thank you to Mrs. Stoltz for getting involved, or Ms. Stoltz, I'm sorry. Jerome Eberhart and Scott Kenjia. On June 9th, the Main Street Mobile Station at 500 South Main Street was robbed. Jerome and Scott, both patrons at the station, attempted to restrain the suspect on the ground until police arrived. Suspect was able to escape and run to a nearby getaway vehicle, however, in the struggle, dropped all the money he had stolen from the register. Another citizen observed the suspect run to the vehicle and provided that information to the police. Because of Scott and Jerome's action, the money stolen by the suspect was recovered, and the suspects were ultimately taken into custody and charged with robbery. Craig Kopaka. Craig Kopaka? On July 18th, Mr. Kopaka observed a young child walking on the sidewalk alone along South River Road. Through the inherent safety issue, Mr. Kopaka took it upon himself to stop and check the child's welfare, immediately contacted police, and stayed with the child until officers arrived on scene. Mr. Kopaka's willingness to get involved ensured the safety of the child and allowed officers to reunite the child with his family unharmed. Chelsea Mayer. On December 28th, 2017, Chelsea was shopping in Walmart when she observed a customer having a seizure in the store with staff around him. Chelsea stepped in to assist and provided an update to the dispatcher until police arrived. Chelsea continued to be a great asset while waiting for rescue personnel, assisting the officer in placing the victim in the recovery position and ensuring he did not choke as he continued to seize. Chelsea continued to calm the suspect and provided vital information to West Bend Fire and Rescue when they arrived to treat the suspect... subject, I'm sorry. Chelsea provided the rescue personnel with a detailed description of her observations and allowed them to efficiently treat and ensure his full recovery. So thank you for getting involved.[931.13][931.13](applause) Donna Cameni and Carissa Cameni? Donna and Carissa, on January 21st of this year, 2018, noted an altercation between a male and female outside their residence. Understanding that someone needed to help, they contacted the police, and while officers were arriving, the male fled the scene. While officers were investigating, they were having some difficulty gathering identification and information on the suspect. Donna Cameni later came forward again and provided updated information regarding the investigation and informed dispatch of the whereabouts of the male involved in the incident. Officers located the male suspect and were able to take him into custody. Due to the information provided by Carissa and Donna, officers were able to respond quickly, de-escalate a situation, and prevent further harm to the victim. Wendy Bertrand, Eliza Schultz, Miranda Veilbaum, Craig Larson, and Mary Schmidt. Anyone's in the audience? Step forward, please. Wendy Bertrand, Lisa Schultz, Miranda Veilbaum, Craig Larson, and Mary Schmidt. In the past year, these citizens all observed impaired drivers in the city of West Bend and took action. In each case, these citizens either followed the vehicle or obtained descriptions and contacted the police. This information and the citizens' willingness to get involved allowed the police to locate and stop the vehicles. In each of the cases, the drivers were either intoxicated or impaired by use of narcotics, drugs, and charged with OWI. These citizens are commended for their willingness to get involved. Their action helped prevent potential vehicle crashes, serious injuries, and helped ensure our roadways are safe for all to use.[1045.08][1045.08](applause) Troops? Please. Yep, come on up front, please. As we do every year during our Citizen Awards, we want to honor a special group of citizens. This is our Crime Prevention Patrol. Notice during the licensing portion, you heard Music on Main, the Toad Race. You know you have approved parades, just a litany, almost a special event pretty much every weekend. If it wasn't for this group, our department would not be able to ensure that those events were held safely. Over the last year, 2017, this group provided over 1,000 hours of volunteer service to I'd like to recognize them individually. When I call your name, please just take a step forward. Gordy Cleaver? Gordy put in 140 hours of community service. Brian Metz not able to join us tonight, 109 hours. Janet Ayers, 139 hours. James Yurkovic not able to join us, 72 hours. Steve Reinkie, 35 hours. Bill Islandfeld, 40 hours. Tom Islandfeld, 69 hours. Jim Merrish, 43 hours. Mike Welner, 37 hours. Rich Caston, some hours in. Jim Schutz, 84 hours. Linda Stockhausen, 14 hours. Ruth Ann Ewart, 102 hours. Milo put some hours in. Jim Reinkie, 72 hours. And Tim Bone, who couldn't be here because he's been deployed, 46 hours of community service. So again, thank you very much for all you do for West Bend.[1163.65][1163.65](applause) Yep, thank you.
I know when I was an officer, they were invaluable to us, and I know they still are today. They put in a lot of time and volunteer a lot of hours away from their family to help us out. And also thank you to the citizens that were willing to step up and make a difference in the lives of the people of the city of West Bend. At this time, I will recess the Common Counsel meeting.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Public Works for February 19th, 2018 to order. We have three items on the agenda. Item number one is the minutes of February 5th, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side? And that motion carries. Item number two is the permission to advertise contract 18-06 Commerce Street Water Main Repair for bids. Presentation by City Engineer Max Marshall. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. And good evening to Mrs. Kay, who said she would be watching me tonight. So my first item tonight is for permission to advertise contract 1806. Our water utility has attempted to repair a faulty valve at the intersection of Commerce Street and Monroe Street. During the process of excavating the area, they discovered that the existing water main line was suddenly dropping and laid at a depth that is significantly lower than our standard seven-foot depth. In addition, with this, there were conflicts with other utilities. So for all these reasons, it became beyond their capabilities to pursue the work. And now we have to contract this work out with a contractor who would have the equipment and the capabilities to repair the water main. So we would be removing and replacing approximately 130 linear feet of six-inch ductile iron water main. We're moving and replacing three valves, including the faulty one, reconnecting to an existing hydrant, and other work such as replacing curb and gutter, restoring the asphalt and concrete pavement in the area, grass restoration, restoration, et cetera. The new water main that would be relayed would be installed at a shallower depth to facilitate future maintenance. The current cost estimate for the construction is about $47,000, and we would use budgeted water utility funds to complete this project. And then if council authorizes the bid for this contract, you have the schedule on the memo with construction starting early May.
Thanks, Max. Just for my own edification, how far did it drop?
About 12 feet.
I'd say it's a little deeper than you'd want.
Yeah, see, that's double about our standard depth.
Exactly.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Yes, John?
Yeah, I have a question, just quizzed about removing the water main that's in there. Is that normal for pulling old water main ductile out or just leaving in? Is there a reason why they're requesting you have it removed?
You're talking about the existing water main?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, they want to relay that section of water main. So I'm not sure if they will abandon the existing in place. We've done that in the past. Or if they will remove the pipe. But basically, we would cut the water main at the point where it drops, or a little before, and then replace a new section at the proper depth, at the standard depth, to connect to the other end of that section that's being relayed. So as far as abandoning or removing the existing water main that's 12 feet deep, we've done both. I'm not sure if a decision has been made on which one we'll do.
Okay. The only reason I'm asking is if we didn't have to go down 12 feet to remove the old one, I'm just thinking, cost-wise, would it be cheaper if they didn't have to dig the old one out and then just lay the one on top? But if there's a concern that you can't put the new layer over top and they have to remove it, then I understand.
Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side? That motion carries. Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
Item number three is a discussion of the city taxi service. The presentation by City Administrator Jay Shambow. Good evening, Jay.
It's fitting to make Mike work at his last meeting.
How does it last?
Because I forgot to tell him that there was a PowerPoint presentation.[1536.65][1536.65](laughing) That's going to come up in a second. Close it and come back? No. Oh, there you go. Just got to wiggle it. So Shared Ride Taxi, just providing some information based on the request of the council from the last renewal. I do have representatives here from the city with the taxi. Angela and Doug are here, and then also FDS. Both Wes and Doug are here if there are some questions in addition to the information that's provided. After the council had a chance to review the contract and extend it again for 2018, as-directed staff got together with FDS. We met internally a few times, and then also met with Washington County to discuss the possibility of working collaboratively with the county and city together. First slide shows some history. So it just talks about the history being in place for 25 years, first talked about in 1991, implemented in '93. Sharing the data that actual cost per ride is $11.25. We're able to provide a reduced fare by way of grant opportunities that the city has access to, to make this an affordable service for our constituents. Back in 1993, the fares were $2 and $1, and they've been increased over the years to currently at $4.50 and $3.50 for youth and elderly and disabled. Again, the bottom line there shows 54,000 rides. When it first was implemented in 1993, we peaked at around 120,000 rides when gas prices were high and the usership was higher than it is now, and it's dipped the last few years down to right around 100,000 rides in 2017. Some additional information, we are in the middle of a five-year term with our contractor, FDS. It shows that the contracted price for 2017 was 1 million, just over $1 million, $1,45,000. And then in 2016, a new fee or fare hit the books to try to help the bottom line, and that was the agency fare rate. So this is a little higher cost than the $4.50 and $3.50 from the slide before, being $6.05 if an agency is buying these coupons or a 10-ride coupon for their constituents that they hand out. And mainly, that's through the human service organizations. That's been a fee that was added, and you'll see the net result of that in a little bit, but certainly was a positive to the bottom line in the taxi service. In 2016, in another attempt to make the taxi service solvent, the city took on, Doug and his team in the Vehicle Maintenance Division, took on the maintenance of all of the taxis. That took a little bit of time to work out the kinks. I think they would say, both the FDS team and Doug's team, say that they've gotten there now. We've been fortunate to receive some newer vehicles, so it makes that maintenance a little easier, and they've been able to work with each other as to the timing of maintaining those vehicles. Shows the history of the rate increase, the two increases in the last four years, one being in 2013, and the one most recently, as you're aware of, in 2017. The next slide talks about the usership, and I think this is a telling slide for the taxi service, that 70% of all of our riders are elderly or disabled. There are another 24%, almost 25% of adults that use it, either by paid cash or coupon, and then a smaller percent of students typically later in the day, in that mid-afternoon range... and then a smaller percent of students typically later in the day, in that mid-afternoon range, 5% or almost 6,000 rides are to students. Angela did the, the math and actually counted the individual riders, so that last slide in, or last bullet in blue on the bottom of the last note indicates that 3,000, 3,300, so just over 3,000 unique users or individuals within the system. So, on average, to get up to the 300, or the 99,000 rides, the average rider rides about, about 30 times in any given, but there are 3,000 or 10% of our population, just over 10%, that utilize this service in any, any given year. And the test year that Angela used was 2016. Some additional information regarding revenue before you, sharing the, like, actual fare cash that comes in for all the categories, adult, student, elderly, and disabled, total about 160,000. Coupon sales was 280,000, so total fares is 436,000. The expenses are broken down for you there on the top, the contract with FDS, and then the administrative salary. Angela's salary is funded through this program, some advertising postage and, and other miscellaneous fees to come up to the 1.19 million in 2017. Revenue, I already mentioned the 436 in fares. Vehicle maintenance revenue, that's 82,000, that was started in 2016. And then the grant funding that we received by both the state and the federal share totals 583,000. So, it, it shows a deficit for 2017 fiscal year of $17,816.90. And the note at the bottom of this slide indicates that that money is coming back to us. So, 2017 was a revenue neutral or a levy-neutral year. This program was offered without being on the levy at all, because they always withhold 10% of the grant amount, and they don't provide that back to us until after a successful audit. So, the audit has been done, and it's just a matter of waiting out the state and returning the 10%. So, certainly, the taxi had a very good year in 2017. I mentioned the fleet. We have 14 vehicles in our fleet. 11 of them are on during peak times. This slide has a lot of information on it. So, the, the big chart for you shows the year of the individual vehicle, with our oldest vehicle being 2010, and 220,000 miles, down to our newest few vehicles that we were able to obtain in 2017, with the smallest mileage ones being 8,500, 8,500 miles. This shows the CPI increase, so the cost of the FDS contract goes up based on CPI. That's the first bullet on your left. And then the contract hours is the actual hours that the taxi is in service. I mentioned 11 vehicles during peak time. That's the early morning, late afternoon hours when kids are getting out of school and patrons are, are needing to head, head home from work. That's the, the real peak time. And then Saturday and, and Sunday, you can see the hours significantly decrease as the demand for the service decreases as well. This is a, a slide of more detail of the recent vehicles that we were able to obtain by way of the, the grant, and this is a separate grant than the operating grant that, that the city receives. These are the grant monies that go to purchase the vehicles. The last one on that slide is double asterisk. It's a 2018 model minibus that we received, 38,000. The city share was 15,000, is on its way and should be here any day, has not been delivered as of yet. So, once that bus comes to us, then we'll knock out, on this previous slide, one of those four minibuses that are the oldest in the fleet, one of the 2010s or 2011, depending on what Steve and the maintenance team recommend as far as which one should be called out. And I, I know you know this because we've had, we've gone through these the last few years, but as those older vehicles are replaced, we do sell them on the auction, on the public auction. We've been able to do quite well with the sale of those older vehicles, and then that money goes to offset the city share. This note does indicate that that fund, they call it the Taxi Replacement Fund, is about depleted. So, we are in the process of applying for additional minivans and minibuses. We have four of them requested. We are not likely to receive all four of those requests in 2018. But if we are fortunate enough to receive any of the four, we'd be coming back to the council and asking for that 20% cost share, because the, the funds is next to depleted, and the sale of the one minibus won't offset the approximate $39,000 that would be needed if the, if, again, if all four vehicles were granted to the city in, in the 2018 year, which isn't real likely, Angela tells me. This slide's an impressive slide, shows how well the operation has been administered here in, in the city of West Bend. Much thanks to Doug, Angela, and the FDS folks. But the, the percent on the levy, in the far-right column in yellow, and I apologize for the audience that it's really small, it shows the city of West Bend is the, is the second-best, if you will, of all of the municipalities that offer a shared-ride taxi, with only being 1.3% of the cost being on the levy. And in this case, that 14,000 that shows the local share is for 2017. It's the estimate that goes into the budget to ask for the grant money. It'll actually be a 0% this year, for, or for past year, for 2017. But there are, and you can see the dollar amounts on the second-right column, the local share is anywhere from that 15,000 up to over $1 million for some of the, some of the more expensive, some of them are even $2 million, City of Waukesha. We have one of the larger shared-ride taxis and run it in a very efficient manner. Point of note for Washington County, if you, if you look at their operation halfway down, it shows that they are on the levy at 834,000 or 23% of the cost of the operation. When meeting with them recently, they shared that, they shared with us that that 834,000 isn't entirely accurate. Again, this is their application number that goes into the state for the grant amount. They, on an annual basis, talk about being on the levy in the neighborhood of 600,000 or 660,000, are the two numbers that they mentioned when we met with them. So, so significantly more costly to run, and their operation is very similar from the standpoint of right around 100,000 rides in an annual basis as well. Some additional notes, sometimes the cost of the rides comes up. This, this slide shows state DOT data, again, with the costs of the rides from comparable municipalities, and it shows that we're at the higher end of the, of the fares as well, what we charge currently. And there's a bunch of notes on the right that have all of the details, including our one detail that we have children under four ride-free in the city of West Bend. I mentioned this already, the ride, the trend in ridership has been down over the years. We peaked at just over 120,000 rides in 2011, and if you look at the gas price chart on how that's come down over the years, it kind of mirrors this chart as well. So, we think that fuel costs certainly have a, play a part in this, that ridership goes down as fuel, fuel costs have gone down. Interfaith Caregivers has been fortunate to be able to provide more rides and has more van drivers available, drivers available for volunteers. They put on some more vans recently, and, and that has an impact on people that are able to obtain that service for a even further reduced cost than what we provide. And then the other ones are listed for you there as well. The MTM is the Washington County program that is statewide for providing those rides, Medicaid, Badger Care and Family Planning. We did talk, one meeting with FDS and staff, about what, what we could do as an organization to become even more efficient, or basically raise additional revenues. Raising the agency fares is, we put it, we intentionally put it first on this list, because it's one that staff feels really comfortable about recommending. That's currently at $60.50, and they feel that they could, I won't say easily, but within reason, raise the rate and still, and still have an efficient system that is sought after by folks, and would generate about $25,000 additional revenue on an annual basis. So, that's something that, depending on how this conversation goes, we'll likely be pursuing and bringing back to you in the near future. Sponsorship opportunities, or putting a, a name on the bus or the taxi has been talked about here in the past. Staff hasn't explored that in too much detail. There's pros and cons that always come up when that gets talked about, but we can talk about that as well, if that's the desire of the council. We can explore that in some more detail. Raising ridership fare rates is always an option. I did share that slide that shows we're near the top of the list already, and when you do raise rates, you stand the chance of individuals not riding as much in the future as well, so it could have a negative impact on the overall revenue. And then reducing service hours. FDS and, and Angela, Doug talk about this often. They try to hone those, those service hours specific to when the ridership demands are. But again, if, if costs become or continue to become a concern for this program, we can further look at and, and try to tease out some of those numbers to, to fine-tune the actual costs of service hours, not being recommended at this time by staff, but something that we could look at if, if that was the desire of the council. That's all I have. Again, the experts are in the room. If you want to talk specifically to, to Doug or Wes, Wes runs the local option, operation here at FDS, and Doug is the general manager of it, owns the, owns the joint, and Angela is our local expert, works with this on a daily, daily basis, and Doug Newman operates the, and oversees the vehicle maintenance area. So, comments or questions that you have at this time?
Thanks, Jay. I've got two that I'd like to talk about. One is, you talked about the 3,300 riders, unique riders. You said there's 11 buses on at a peak time. The 3,300 averages out to nine riders a day. 11, it seems like we have a pretty heavy bus load for nine riders a day on an average. Now, I'm guessing that there's some days there's 18 riders and some days there's zero. How are we working through that?
I'll let somebody else answer that. I'll just, I'll start by saying the 3,300 riders were unique riders. So, some riders, some of those individuals ride 100 times in a year or daily. They ride 300 times a year. But at, at least at one time, 3,300 individuals rode at least once. But specifically, how many rides you do in a day? Why don't you guys speak to that?
We average, on a weekday, about 350 rides. 350 passengers per day, on a weekday.
So, I'm struggling with the 3,000 number, then.
That 3,000 number is how many individuals ride out of the 90,000 rides that we have in a year, out of 100,000.
So, if you're giving 350 rides, and we've got, it still works out to about 10 individual riders. That's where I'm, I'm...
Maybe the definition of a ride would be helpful as well. So, if, and I, I spent four hours with John on a ride-along and got to learn some of this stuff in more detail firsthand. If, if I call for a ride and get picked up from my home and taken to city hall, that's one ride. If I, on the way to city hall, want to go to Walmart first and ask to be dropped off there, shop for two hours, so that's one ride from my home to Walmart, then call again from Walmart to city hall, and then city hall to home, that, I would have three rides, personally, just in one day.
But I'm assuming we double up and we don't take just one rider per ride?
Oftentimes, there are more than one individual in the vehicle, yep.
And it just seems pretty, like a high number of, of buses that would be running or if the number of days are, I mean, maybe if we don't run it on a Friday or a Monday or something. Just seems to me that we're, we're pretty built up for the amount of rides that we've got. The second piece, as you know, we've, we've got a conversation going with the county, and the county is about the sales tax, and they're pushing back, saying, hey, we should share our services. Here's a good chance they can take over our, our taxi service and run with their current taxi service. What are the downfalls to that process?
I ain't talking about the rides. We do about 100,000 rides a year, which averages out to, I don't have the, a calculator in front of me, but it's going to average, you know, like Wes said, we do about 350, 375 on an average weekday. So, the 3,000 or 3,400 riders is about 10% of the population that actually use the taxi.
Okay.
To answer your question on the, the county rules are different than the city rules.
Okay.
The first rule is, ours are, it's a door-to-door service. In our, in our case, it's a, it's a curb-to- curb service in which we try to be there within 30 minutes.
I think you need to get on, get in the microphone. We're getting...
Sorry. We try to get there within 30 minutes of the call. In case of the county, they're within an hour, and you have to call a day ahead of time minimum, 24 hours in advance. If you call right now for a taxi, should be here within 30 minutes. That's probably the biggest upside to it for people, for individuals. So, if they have to go to, unfortunately, when you talk about elderly handicapped people, looking ahead isn't always the big deal, it's what's going to happen within two or three hours from now. That's the biggest thing. Also, you're going to lose all control over what you decide. It's going to go to the county, is the biggest thing, I think.
Thanks.
I see on there, they no longer pick up at Cedar Ridge, Washington County does that. Why?
Originally, when that was first started, and I've, I've been with us seven years, since the first contract, was, there was a handshake agreement between the county and the city of West Bend. John Chappell was the man behind that. The county had asked us if, because it's technically out of our area, and the, the federal government doesn't want you to duplicate services. So, the county and us, we're both going out there. Our rules are two miles from within the city limits, a little bit out of the area. It says Cedar Ridge on there. We're talking more like the Cedar Campus is out on Highway Z. And in our case, it was, it was actually cheaper for people to ride the county taxi to come back into town than it is for us, because we charge a dollar a mile additional. So, they were going, people would go out there for, you know, 7.50, and I think the county was charging just a little bit less than that. So, it didn't really make much sense for people to ride with us, so we just basically kind of hands-off and said, yeah, no problem. And then you talked about, the other thing I'll, I'll bring up is, at one time, the county used to give rides to people within the city limits to go to their parking rides, and they would give them for free, to promote their Washington County commuter express. So, when you talk about, you see some number changes and stuff. Granted, it's not a, a great deal of numbers. It might be, you know, 10, 10, 12 people a day. That's another reason why some people use the county to do that instead of us, and we kind of just said, you know, for a free ride, you know, why, why charge somebody $3, $4 where they can take a free ride? Just trying to be nice to the people.
Yes, Chris?
Something that just stuck out to me, you just said that the federal government doesn't like to duplicate services. So, is the county not giving services within the city of West Bend?
They're not supposed to.
Okay.
They're not supposed to take, pick up within the city.
Okay.
And deliver within the city during our operating hours. Just like we're not supposed to go out to the county and take somebody from the county, we can bring them back into the city, but we can't take them from outside the county and drop them outside the county again, or outside the city, I'm sorry by that. So, if they're outside the city limits, and I'll use a, a great example, I guess, is on the corner of Scenic and 33, that's the township surrounded by the city. So, technically, if we pick somebody up there, we have to bring them into the city. We can't take them down Scenic and drop them off at the end of Scenic. We follow that rule pretty stringent.
Okay. Thanks. Yes?
Couple of comments I've got, and to avoid a conflict, I'm not talking about the city of West Bend, I'll talk about the county taxi, because I work for the county taxi. When it gets down to rules and regulations, you guys know them a whole lot better than I do. I just drive, I don't worry about the rules, I just do what I'm told. But the thing I'm looking at is, this is one of these programs that, we're lack of a, a good term, it's, when we started, it kind of created a monster, because, and not a monster in a bad way, a monster in a good way, is you've taken... a monster in a good way, is you've taken, what do we have, almost 100,000 people that rode this past year that would not be able to get out of their house, would not be able to go shopping, doctor's appointments, friends' houses without this service. Now, are we going to be able to fund it fully and all of that? No, I understand that. And I'm not advocating that we, you know, dump a ton of money in this. But this is something you got to think about from their standpoint and from what I'm looking at when I have picked people up. You know, you pick some of these people up and, to be honest, when you talk to everybody that's on your bus or on your taxi, a lot of them are crying because they're so happy they're getting out of their house because they have no other way to do it. And this is one of these things that, we've had this for 25 years. Yeah, it's costing us some money. I understand that. But how do you replace it? How do you just chop it off and say, sorry, 100,000 people aren't going to be able to leave their house anymore or go to work? I mean, I take people to work, when I work, that go to ride every day. They go to and from work, what, you know, doctor's appointments, shopping, friends, like I said. The reasons are various. I mean, some don't have licenses, some lost their licenses, you know. Some of them had their cars taken away by their family members because they're not eligible to drive anymore. And my biggest concern is, you know, we're supposed to be looking out for our city and we're supposed to be looking out for our citizens. How do we justify telling them, sorry, we ain't going to do this anymore?
Thanks, Stephen. And I don't want anybody to get the impression that I'm trying to say that where you cut it off and not have the service at all. You know, that 20% number that, you know, we've depleted our fleet number is concerning, but I'm not at all saying that we would cut the entire service out. I'm just looking for a more efficient or effective way that we can run it, provide a good service, and still not be having to worry about some of these costs that are coming our way.
No, that's understood. I'm not saying that. You're implying it at all, Rich. I'm just saying that. This is something, we got to keep this in your back of your head that a lot of people depend on this.
Absolutely. So Jay, you are looking from direction from us in terms of probably those financial, future of taxi financial considerations on that slide or any other ideas?
Yeah, I don't know that I'm looking for action or a motion or anything like that at this time. If there are additional pieces of information that you don't have, that you saw in here, ask. Ask about those offline and we can bring them back to you.
I mean, the one that I've brought up a couple of times and others have as well, you know, the sponsorship opportunities, I guess I'd like to know, you know, we know there are some downfalls to that and it plays kind of with the grant money a little bit in terms of what we can get within grants. But maybe there's some opportunities there that we can definitely look at, so.
We can pursue that.
Okay.
And I would, I know Wes lined up my ride along. He's offered that for all of you as well. It is, it's pretty cool. It was fun to interact. I got to go out with Alderman Butchlick. And as, with his permission, interacting with the clientele that he was picking up, some of them did say, I asked them flat out, what would you do without the taxi? And they said, if you're here to take away our taxi, I'd be marooned in my apartment all winter long. And I, of course, assured them that this was just a ride along and I was finding out some additional information. But we took people to work in that four-hour stretch. We took people to the grocery store. We took people to and from their apartment, to the clinics in town, all the clinics in town. And it's certainly a service that's appreciated by our constituents. There's no doubt about that. If you are looking for some firsthand knowledge, spend a couple of hours with these guys and I think that'll help as well just with understanding. If there's more information, Angela and I wanted to specifically thank her for putting this together. She did a great job. This was, I know it was informative to me to go through the process. Hopefully, it was to you as well. And if there are pieces that are missing, ask for them and we'll come back with them. And then we'll work with these guys and staff to come with some revenue enhancements, if you will, for the future as well.
Yeah, thank you, Angela, for helping put that together. I'll probably take you up on that offer and do a ride along. And I'd like to see the operation firsthand. I guess the biggest question is, how was John driving? Was it?
Very safely.
That's good news. All right. Thanks, Jay. Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
Thanks, Rich. I'd like to call the Finance Committee to order for February 19th, 2018. We have eight items on tonight's agenda. Item one is approve the minutes of February 5th, 2018.
Approve. Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments or corrections? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item two, award quote Q18-01 Construction Management and Inspection Services for Eighth Avenue Reconstruction Phase One Chestnut Street to Walnut Street with a presentation by City Engineer Max Marichal.
Thank you and good evening again. So we're coming to you with recommendation to award this quote for the construction of Eighth Avenue, which is going to happen this spring. We followed the city's purchasing policy and issued a request for proposals for the services of construction management and inspection of the work. We received nine proposals on January 15th, and you have the list in the memo. We reviewed the proposal and scored them based on various criteria, whether it was complete, the firms, the reliability of the firm, their experience, the way they approached the project, et cetera, and the cost. And based on our rating, we would recommend awarding the contract to Fairgram in an amount not to exceed $62,080 as listed in their proposal. The agreement with Fairgram has been reviewed by the city attorney and is attached for signature should you choose to act positively on this recommendation.
Thanks, Max. Any questions for Max?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
Item three, a resolution supporting the grant application for comprehensive bike route system through the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, 2018 through 2022 Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, award cycle with a presentation by City Administrator Jay Chambeau.
I was watching Max run away from the microphone. He knew this was coming. Just kidding, of course. This has kind of been before you in the past few months. The TAP grant came up pretty quickly as far as discovery of it from Bike Friendly and our park staff. Park staff, Bike Friendly, the county, and Max all worked together to submit this application. As part of the application, there is a 20% match. Bike Friendly knows that the likelihood of that 20% needing to be raised with non-city funds is high. And there's some representatives in the, in the audience tonight from Bike Friendly, but we've been, the mayor has been pretty clear about that. That's, that's a conversation that could happen should we be successful in receiving the, in the grant. It is a very competitive grant process and it's one that you can see is sometime out. So the grant cycle is, is a few years out, even if awarded. And then you'd have another opportunity to accept the award or not based on the availability of potentially private funds assisting with that 20%. And I guess that's all I really have as far as introduction goes.
Thanks. I guess my only question, because obviously we talked about applying for the grants and that the city could say no. I guess my only issue is, in this resolution, the project scope basically says it's to provide the comprehensive bike map, including maps, pavement markings, and signage. And then it says that the city would commit city capital improvement funds. And if it's awarded, it says that the city is authorized to accept the award and enter into all necessary agreements with WISDOT for the project described in the application. So does this lock us into accepting that grant if we get awarded?
The, we can turn it down at that point. Obviously, there's going to have to be a change because this is not, the funds have not been allocated. So we're going to have to come back with a modification to reallocate funds. The reason it's worded that way is because it's a competitive process. I mean, you don't want to, you want to seem wishy-washy about it. You want to, you want to seem that you're backing this. So that's the way it's phrased. That's why it's phrased that way. I, I guess we could change that to negotiate all necessary agreements or something. We can modify that if...
Yeah, as long as it says that the council's going to decide at the time of the grant award. I guess I'd look to the table and see something more like that for the next meeting.
I mean, that's fine. Or we can, you can always make a motion and modify the language as we, as part of the motion as well.
I guess I'd like to see it in writing first before I...
Okay.
Unless anyone else has any other thoughts on it?
So is there a time limit that we need to get this done by for that grant application?
Yeah, I was going to say, we have a little bit of time still.
I agree with that, Adam. I think we should have it in black and white.
We can also share the language from the program, which isn't specifically in here, but the actual DOT guidance affords the opportunity for private funds to come into. We can include that in the, in the revised resolution. That's helpful.
All right. I'd make a motion to table then.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Thanks, Jay. Item four, award quote Q18-04 West Bend City Hall Cooling System Replacement with a presentation by Superintendent of Building Inspection, Todd Meeks.
Good evening. We're here tonight to award the quote 1804 for the cooling system. As you all know, the cooling system went down at the end of the last cooling season. And we went out to get a new design for the roof and the cooling system, not to exceed the cost of $158,709. We went out and got four proposals last week. And our proposal that we want to accept is from J&amp;H Heating for $125,190. So J&amp;H Heating has been here in the past. They've done all of PD and they've been here with service calls, maintenance. They know, they know the building. So it's our recommendation to get 1804 approved to move forward.
Thanks. Any comments or questions?
I'll make the motion approve. Second.
One, just addition to it is I would make the motion upon approval by city attorney. They just got us contract documents today, so I have yet to review them.
Friendly amendments. A motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. Item five, entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to State Statute Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is, is or is likely to become involved, hiring claim.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I have a roll call. Sorry.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Shivali?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster?
Aye.
Alderman Williket?
Aye.
Alderman Kist?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And item six, entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to State Statute Section 19.85 Sub 1, so be deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. TIF number 13 Matineers Development Agreement.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call again, please.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Shivali?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster?
Aye.
Alderman Williket?
Aye.
Alderman Kist?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And then how do we do the one for common counsel at the same time? So this time, I'd like to recess the Finance Committee.
And I will call the common counsel to order again. Item 23, entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to State Statute Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility for hiring process for police officers.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Shivali?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster?
Aye.
Alderman Williket?
Aye.
Alderman Kist?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And the common counsel is getting recessed.
to common counsel regarding, regarding hiring claim.
Motion to approve the claim as it was discussed.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item eight, recommendation to common counsel regarding TIF number 13 Matineer Developers Agreement.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. There being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn.
Okay, I'll reconvene the common counsel.
We are going to...
That one?
Yep.
The consent agenda. We're going to be removing item number four and taking that separately. Oh, I'm sorry. Number one, common counsel, regular meeting minutes from February 5th, 2018.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side, motion carrying. Now the consent agenda, removing item number four, which will be taken separately.
Motion approve. Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One note. That the, 13 was, oh, sorry, two notes. 13 was tabled and that the award for the cooling towers is upon city attorney approval.
So we're reading, need to re-vote or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Got the motion?
Motion to approve.
We did already.
So move.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side, motion carries. We got through it. All right. Number four, Reserve Class B Combination License for Borough Buzzdome Maple Road LLC, Buzzdome's Pub and Grill, 1800 Barton Avenue.
I guess I'll make a motion and some comments. Obviously, given what we all saw, there's some concerns. But I guess I'm happy to see another business open in Barton. But at the same time, just know that Mr. Buzzdome knows that we take these seriously. And if there are any violations, I'm sure the chief is going to be the first one to bring this back for discussion. And I also talked a little bit to Lieutenant Ferrand this afternoon. I'd like to make it contingent on final inspection of any building permits before he actually gets issued the license. Is that okay?
It would be a requirement for occupants. Anybody, we can add that in.
So that's my motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions?
I do, Steve. So if I go through this, there's a blatant disregard for, you know, any of the laws that they've got in Germantown at this point. We've got, we're going right up to November 11. going right up to November 11th of 2017, saying he doesn't know anything about what's happening at his establishment, an establishment that's serving intoxicants. I, I just question if this decision is the right one moving forward.
That actually brings me to another thought process that I had. In the past, I had seen that he was not the registered agent for a lot of the establishments that he owned or ran the business for. So this actually gives us the opportunity to hold him accountable for any violations that might occur there.
Okay.
I am, one comment I'll make, I approve this in the licensing board. And I had all the same concerns you did. We got tons of yellow marks on the pages and stuff. And I guess the thing that kind of swung me, for lack of a better word, is the fact that the chief said there really wasn't a reason to deny it or wasn't, you know, if he's willing to follow the rules, I guess I'm willing to give him that chance to do so, but if he's not, I'll be the first one to step in line and say, you know, time to pull his license. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I, I agree too. I'm really reluctant to approve this, but again, as Adam said, it's a business that we've got now that's open. It's going to help the Barton area. I guess give him a chance, and if he doesn't, and he falls on his face, then he's going to find out that West Bend isn't going to just stand there and let him get away with it. He's definitely aware that it's going to be direct.
I don't, I mean, I don't remember. I think we've pulled one license. I don't think it was an easy process, if I remember correctly.
It's, it's not the easiest process. It's a, it's a public hearing, court reporter. It's an evidentiary hearing, so we'd have, you know, Jonathan presenting the case against an establishment. It's not an easy process. I, I will say, the chief and I discussed this with Stephanie and Jay, and one of the, I think, and the chief can fill in some of this, but one of the big, I think one of the big differences here is that some of the follow-up work that the West Bend Police does, specifically if somebody gets a, you know, gets an OWI, they get, they track down where the over-serving happened, which does not always happen everywhere else, and makes it very difficult to point back and say, this happened at his establishment in the past. That's something that the West Bend Police will do and, you know, it, it is, it is also a process where if there's issues, that the police have a dialogue with the person to try and address those first, which is why we don't end up pulling licenses on a regular basis, because usually it's dealt with through, you know, either just corrective action or short-term suspensions to get the message across prior to a full revocation.
Okay.
So, I, I don't disagree with your interpretation of the situation. It's just, I, it's not quite there to deny it from a legal standpoint.
And to kind of dovetail on what you said, I mean, I was involved in one of the ones where they did pull the license, and like you said, it comes down to documentation and everything else. And I can tell you that man back there with the uniform on, he's a stickler for documentation, so he will make sure every i is dotted and every t is crossed.
Correct.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalli.
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins.
Aye.
Alderman Caston.
No.
Alderman Huguster.
Aye.
Ald, Alderman Williket.
Aye.
Alderman Kist.
No.
Motion carried. Five, two.
Okay, item 16, decision regarding the hiring claim.
Motion to approve as we discussed.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side, motion carries. Item 17, an ordinance amending Section 20.02 Sub 5 regarding closed hours for the city parks.
Yeah, just very briefly, first I apologize. I thought this was brought before. We took this to the Park Commission almost two years ago. The idea behind this is that when they redid Old Settlers Park and Vest Pocket Park, we encourage people to park and walk the bridge and do it, and sort of close the park with pretty much tell people they couldn't be walking through there at night. They're not the kind of parks, I mean, you can be on the street. So, we recommend that we just add, we keep everything else the same for all the other parks, and we just, we do not have closing hours for Old Settlers and Pocket Park. Just a matter of practicality. And the parks was in agreement with that two years ago, and they still are.
Thanks Chief. Any comments or questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side, motion carries. My computer shut down, so I gotta find Mike's resolution here.
Mike, can you help?
Item 18, a resolution honoring Michael Ryan upon his retirement. Sorry, Mike.
I'll read it into the record. Whereas Michael Ryan began his career with the city of West Bend on September 19th, 2005, as the cable TV coordinator. Whereas Michael Ryan has advanced the technology with community TV to include high-definition streaming for all community and school programming, upgraded backup systems for old programs, expanded community outreach through public service announcements and nonprofit videos, built a new studio with HD live video capabilities and upgraded video editing software programs for the playback. Whereas Michael Ryan has always helped with community events and nonprofits. Whereas Michael Ryan retires on March 2nd, this is his last meeting, 2018 after 12 years of service to the city of West Bend as a valued employee. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of West Bend honors Michael Ryan and expresses deep appreciation for his loyal years of service.
Mike, you got any comments? Just two quick comments. One, I do, really do appreciate the opportunities I've had here. And the second is, I've worked with a lot of great people, both within city hall here and out in the community when I've been doing my videos. And that's my biggest takeaway from this job, I think. Well, thanks for all your hard years of service, Mike. We really appreciate it. We couldn't have done it without you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you very much.
Okay, item number 19, decision regarding TIFF 13 Matineer Develops, Developers Agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side, motion carries.
Huh?
Sure.
Mike wants it approved, huh? I'm sorry, Mike. It's my first night, what can I say?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same side, motion carries. There you go, Mike. You're official now. Sorry about that. Item 20, approve an annexation agreement for the Davenport Land's southwest corner of State Highway 33 and Scenic Drive, and a presentation by James Rinkie. Good evening, Jim.
Evening, everyone. This annexation agreement is brought forth as part of the attachment that's next on the agenda. It's for approximately 43 acres located at the southwest corner of Washington Street and Scenic Drive. This agreement basically addresses some utility assessment charges that are out there for the Washington Street water and sanitary sewer projects. This is just to reclaim some of that money that was expended for that extension. Along with that, we also have, the agreement provides a way for us to grab, acquire some more of the scenic drive right-of-way for future expansions. And then it also addresses, just those, that expansion. And it actually addresses it when, when the charges are all due, and when the, the right-of-way acquisitions would be taken care of at the time of development.
Any comments or questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side, motion carries. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Item number 22, dark store resolution. Presentation by Jay.
Up one.
Rich?
You're 21.
I skipped that too. 21. Ordinance attaching property with Area A of the boundary agreement area under the cooperative boundary plan between the city of West Bend and the town of West Bend. Davenport Properties, approximately 43.2 acres at the southwest corner of State Highway 33 and Scenic Drive.
Yeah, this is just the official ordinance to attach the property. This goes hand-in-hand with that annexation agreement that was just previously approved for this, for the lands out at that southwest corner.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side, motion carries.
Thank you.
Now number 22, dark store resolution.
Yeah, I'll just introduce that the League of Wisconsin Municipalities put this information out, this sample resolution. You guys have already passed at least two of them encouraging the legislature to adopt this legislation. The time is running out. It was referred to as a, a hail mary effort, but it's something that's encouraged by the league and based on West Bend's pursuit of this in the past, it's, it's certainly in good order to continue to show support. I know the mayor personally has expressed frustration with leadership within our legislation, that there appears that their votes are there, but just unwilling to get it on the floor to get a two-way vote. So, with that, that's the level of introduction.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to make a few comments on this. I'm intimately familiar with this. So when we say dark store resolution, are we just doing the dark store, or is this also related to the Walgreens bills? I see that it throws Walgreens in there once.
I think the intent of this resolution by the league is that it would cover both of them.
Cause, I mean, the reason it's not getting scheduled in Madison is because there's a lot of questions on the Walgreens bills. The dark store is a no-brainer. So I guess I'd like to make a motion to approve this, but strike the Walgreens language and show that we do support the one that makes sense. And hopefully they split them and at least one makes it through Madison, if that makes sense for everyone.
And I'll second that and take any action we can.
Does that work?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Pardon me?
We'll make that edit.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side, motion carries. Item 24, report by Alderman Williket regarding the downtown bid board meeting.
Uh, we met the first Tuesday of the month, whichever day that was. Main thing we discussed is they're going through what they want to spend advertising money on. I think we're going to decide that the next meeting. And then they're also went out to bid for landscaping stuff, so spring is just around the corner.
Okay. Item 25, a report by Alderman Caston or Alderman Williket regarding the planning commission meeting.
So we had a meeting on February 6th. My first one as a commissioner, so it was pretty easy. Three items on the agenda. There was, McDonald's is doing a small change to its facade, as well as reconfiguring its, its parking across the street here, to make things a little bit easier for their drive-through operations. We talked about the petition for attaching the 43 acres that we just talked about for the Davenport piece. And then we approved a plot for the certified survey map for a, a plot in the Woodcrest Ridge State subdivision.
Okay, very good. Item number 26, report by Alderman Jenkins regarding the library board meeting.
All right, we met last Tuesday, the 13th. The big and exciting item we took up was we went out for bid, as was talked about in the past common council meetings, for our library website redesign project. We had 16 responses, which we were really surprised about. And the winning bid went to Byte Studios for a bid of up to $12,300 that'll be pulled from our marketing fund.
And the last item, number 27, report by Alderman Jenkins regarding community TV.
All right. I was happy to, for my first time, getting to share this. This was also on the 13th after the library board meeting. Thankfully, the meeting's at 8 o'clock. We heard a bit about Patrick's vision for leading the department, heavier emphasis on marketing and technology, so I'm really excited to see that get up and running. He talked a little bit more about income ideas, one of which was grants for providing and producing PSAs, which is pretty nice, so we'll, we'll see progress on that. He purchased a new Steadicam to increase the professionalism of the videos, so I'm excited to see that up and running. And he mentioned, and I believe was mentioned in the past, he updated us on the video series for, called The City, which is featured on YouTube and Facebook, so check that out. And of course, we congratulated Mike Ryan for his 12 years of service with us. So, thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Chris. And with that, we'll adjourn the common council meeting. Are there any announcements?
I just have one. So we, obviously, we, we recognize the Crime Prevention Patrol today. I just want to put out there that they are looking for members. So if there's anybody out there that is interested in helping volunteer at the police department, I offer that you get in touch with them, and it's, it's definitely a, a very worthwhile group, so.
Very much needed.
And one last...
Looking for any old guys?
Absolutely.
With good driving record.
And one last one is to get out there and vote tomorrow.
All right, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.